All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is six P M. It is time to actually remove. Time to get started. We'll start with the pledge. See me and this rolling. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Full board is present this evening. You ready? Let's start off by recognizing our kings of the month. Dr. Dr. Do you want to be that, do you?
So I will call up first. We'll just start with the elementary Emerson Miley. You know, come up Emerson. And they took some time to write up about Emerson. Emerson was nominated by Mrs. Brunner and other staff because of character and contagious joy for learning. She is dependable, respectful to her classmates and teachers, demonstrates great self-control, and is always among the first to celebrate other successes. Emerson's kindness is infectious, and her teachers cannot wait to see all she accomplishes. So congratulations Emerson. That's some pretty nice words that they said about you. So what's your favorite thing in school? Do you like to write? What do you like to write about? Nice. Truly nice. Do you have any particular fable that you like the most, or we're kind of putting you on the spot, aren't we? You can think about it. So I don't give Emerson. Next, from junior high Wyatt Billiard. So Wyatt was chosen by several staff members to represent the junior high class for always going above and beyond. Mr. Amor witnessed Wyatt offered to help another student with their English assignment and was impressed with his explanations. Mr. Crozier noted that he is always seeking opportunities to help others without being asked, just like when Wyatt went out of his way to get this guy a drink during her lunch supervision. Way to be the king. So congratulations Wyatt. Put you on the spot as much as I did.
I will, will. What's your favorite class?
Um, my math.
Math. There you go. Well, congratulations.
And then Gwen Barker. Maybe just scroll them up. So Gwen was chosen by staff for her actions at the semi-state band competition. After results were announced, a member of another school's band was visibly upset, and Gwen took it upon herself to console that student and offer words of encouragement. She represented herself in bliss cast in a high manner, and her teachers could not be more proud. So thank you Gwen for doing that. And my shout of the competition, I know that wasn't twice the result, but you guys got pretty close. So that's not her.
I play baritone for concert, and during marching band, I do polygony.
Okay, awesome. So the most fun experience this year was then down at Lucas?
I think most of the accomplishments and stuff are kind of equal in my brain, but the most fun I had is during practice with my friends and making those memories that happened.
What made you pervert it, do you ask? Well, much appreciated.
And if you can, if you guys could all come up here and we could get a picture as well, so. Turn that way. So that's in the theater. At least you'd be around.
Ready? Excellent.
Well done.
Thank you for having me. Really appreciate you being here, and you are welcome to leave because it only goes down. More than the box. Thank you guys. Thank you. All right, next we have the post commentary. So if there's anything on the agenda that you'd see that you would like to make me comment about, this is if we find. Hear anything, so we will move on from that portion. Dr. Dr., you want to give some updates here?
Just a couple of quick things. Roof project update. Did have the kind of kickoff meeting for that. The contractor that we're working with, it looks like they're finishing up one project. They'd like to still try to get it done before they move to Christmas break, but if they can't, then spring break will be targeted as the time that they'll work on. Trying to get that part of it finished. Second piece is, we had our first calendar committee meeting. What's it been now? I see several people that were in the audience. Been a full week ago or a week and a half ago. Just talked about some of the concepts with the calendar. We're working right now on getting a survey together that we can get out to everybody to kind of get a flavor for where we are as far as the calendar goes. I will say one challenge that we've kind of encountered with the traditional calendar that we have now. The iRead schedule for when that test is given is basically kind of budding up against the end of that two-week spring break. So it means the kids are kind of going into iRead after being off two weeks. With as high stakes as that is now, we probably really do need to take a look and consider, is there a better way to do that? To give those kids kind of the full advantage going into that. So there may be some tweaks on this calendar that are a little different, and that's one of the things that we're working together on to try to get out on the survey. So people don't think it's just we're trying to kill everybody's joy with the extra week. There is actually an academic reason as to why we need to make some changes to the calendar. I'd also like to see if we can do something where we look at a two-year window on the calendar rather than one, so people really have some time to plan out for the future as well. So any comments that sum it up?
I think you just nailed it.
Is the survey something that?
We did one last year, but I wrote it and it was not probably, it was the hurry up and write a survey survey. So I'll take blame for it. So now I've got smarter people that will help me try to get it together for this I'm coming to.
You saying last year, it was earlier this year.
Yeah, it was earlier this year.
Actually, in the past, like I know that we were able to vote on whatever the choices that the committee came up with. Is that still going to be a thing?
Yeah, once we get the surveys back, then what we'll do is we'll take a look at some actual options for the calendar, because there's some other nuances there as well, like we still have the one-week fall break. We have the one we start. There's several items in there that we need to take a look at, so.
To piggyback on that question, every year that that's went out, the students have always had an opportunity to vote on that. Is that going to continue?
I think we'll probably do a stakeholder vote is what I would guess. So it'd probably be parents and staff and then go from there. So, yeah.
Students are still going to be included in.
But some of that'll just be due to the, like, there are some academic pieces to this, this one that probably need to be considered more.
Some of the options may not, may not be there.
All right, anything else? Great. Move on to the track report.
I won't open all these, or we'll be here forever. Here is the monthly bank to fund balance report. It does show you that all of the funds are reconciled to the bank. So here is the fund report. And whenever I go to the next report, you'll be able to see that the revenues and the expenditures will match. So we have the month to date and the year to date. Our education balance is a million, three sixty-four, oh eight-six. Operations, two million, five ninety-four, nine oh-nine.
You see any opportunity to move anything in back into the rainy day at the end of this year or not? That's a foot question, just ballpark. It's lower than it's been for a while for us. No, that's fine. That's an okay answer. I'm just asking.
I don't know. I mean, it would be nice to do that because I, I believe that that is something that should be done at the end of the year if there, you know, if there's the availability. I just don't know that that'll happen. On this monthly superintendent report, whenever I had said that the totals, so these totals here on this bottom will match all of the totals on the fund report. So you have the monthly total and then the year-to-date total. So this monthly total and this year-to-date total will reconcile back to the fund report. So here's the education and the balance. And then, of course, the revenue, so the revenues and the expenditures will all match back to the fund report. Here's the appropriation report for just the education fund. And right now, we've spent at seventy-nine percent. So we still have twenty-one percent. So we're on target for the school year. And there have been some expenses out of there for the curriculum and textbooks. So whenever we approve the additional appropriations, that will go back in there and then that will increase that, but we're still.
Are the encumbrances, all the, like, new encumbrances on this, are we doing that this year where, like, they can't? They had to have been already? So we, we know pretty much what's still
Yes.
coming down the line.
Yep. And here is the operations fund. We're seventy-five percent of that one. So for education operations, we're, we're right on target. Anything else you want to see or have any questions on?
So on the bond statement, what, do we have a what, an idea? I know we've talked to, we have mentioned many things, but what's going to come out of that, the roofing, right? What, do we have, is that what you're going to talk about going forward, or do we have other things that are going to come out of that amount that we know about already?
I think at this point, it, we can bring to you, because Chris has been working on the list in December. If, I think we're pretty much finished up with everything with the stadium. The only thing that, I mean, it would only be something that if there was an emergency thing that came up that we felt like we needed to take it out of the bond instead of that, but no, the big projects. He'd like to bring you the list in December of things to look at, and then we should kind of be reconciled on that first bond to know exactly how much money we've got left.
We did just receive the pay twelve, K J G. And so we do still have a K J G that's outstanding. I'll send another one on there for some. But I do know that right now, that, that last payment.
You should be getting some money back from the contingency money. So that would be kind of the final reconciliation on that will be when that credit's back in.
You don't have to go back to it by, I just remember the encumbrance line for buses. It has a hundred and sixty thousand. But didn't we expend that by buying two buses this year, or is this another bus?
That, so we had, we paid for one, and then there was the P O that was prepared for that one. And then remember, Sherry came in and asked if she could purchase that other one? Well, because there was one encumbered plus this one budgeted, now we still have one encumbered that we're waiting on.
And it's.
And we have it ordered, right?
It is ordered. Okay. So this one may also, that's in the three hundred. This one may also carry over.
That's what I'm saying. So is this a carryover, or this will be expended when, whenever this bus that we've already ordered? Is that, I guess that's my question. Is that the bus that we ordered but haven't paid for, or is this another encumbrance?
Nope. This is the one that we've ordered and not paid for. But if you look on here, it's the two seven four zero zero seven three four right here.
Right.
School buses and purchases. That's the one. This one is one that has, that was just ordered this year that just hasn't come in.
Hasn't paid.
Correct. Now, that may end up carrying over even into next year if we don't get it.
Right. I just couldn't remember if that, because we had a discussion, we were doing two, and I didn't know if that was one that we hope to get, like, in May, like we used to, or if this is the schedule that she had talked about, since we don't know when we can get one where.
Correct. This is the one that she, whenever she came here, that she's supposed to be raising.
She said it'll be next year before we get it.
Yeah, so that one, that encumbrance will carry over and.
Yeah, we hit.
We did talk about ordering ahead. We know.
Oh, I did, in general, a comment about not the financial, but the reporting. So the file, the folder in Google Drive, we've gotten away from putting these PDFs in that, like the meeting folder. So like a point-in-time snapshot of whatever the report you're presenting isn't in that file, in that folder. So like the meetings, we, in the past, we've been able to go back a year later, and we can see, oh, this is what the report showed on that meeting day. So like a point-in-time version of it. Does that make sense what I'm saying? So we've gotten away from that. And so like, if I go in and look at the reports that are, like, your, your Google Excel sheet, whatever, on the your monthly superintendent report, it could have changed for old months. And I wouldn't know it.
You want a snapshot?
So just a snapshot. If we could get to anything presented in the meetings, regardless of finance or H R or whatever, if we could have those in that meeting, Google Drive folder, just for posterity.
Like a snapshot of the monthly superintendent's report, just to.
Does that make sense what I'm saying, right? So.
Yeah, I think that's something we can work on, try to figure out.
Yeah, technically, the vouchers should be on here too, as something that we.
Yeah, anything we review or talk about.
Because those, you know, those are presented to the board, and we should, we approve those claims.
I know it seems silly, but it's just something that we've had to reference in the past, and I went back to reference something, and it wasn't in the folder, and I had to go back to, like, let you know, change and get it, so.
So a PDF of basically.
In a one-stop shop, in that, in that meetings folder, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
And thank you for sending out the calendar invite.
Anything else? Anybody else have any questions or anything? All right. Mr. Roswell.
New hires for the month, Kurt Wooliver, he's going to substitute teach for us. Sherry and the administrators worked it out to where he could still do his bus route and won't interfere with subbing, and helps Kurt out, helps us out. So that's good to have him be able to go into the classroom. Kennedy Collins was hired as an assistant caregiver at the E L A. Noel Bell, we just hired her as the E L instructional assistant. She'll be working one-on-one with the students that are in the E L program. She is in a transition to teaching course, so she will be able to become certified to give the WEDA assessments, which helps us out extremely. She's very well-versed in foreign languages. She speaks several. She's multiple degrees, so she's an impressive candidate that Abby found and, and has recommended for the position. Ashley Riegler at the E L A, she's got her certifications to be a lead caregiver now. This is just a change in positions from assistant caregiver to lead caregiver with an increase in pay to reflect that position change. Wendell De Myers, he's currently coaching for us in the basketball program. He's going to be substituting. He's got multiple degrees as well. Spoke with him several times and seems like a very good individual, and Eric Brand spoke really highly of him, how he's worked with the kids in the basketball program already, and, and he'll be an asset to us as well. Dr. Bradley Shortridge, he's going to be a substitute teacher. He's very well-rounded. He's been a teacher, administrator, superintendent. He's retired, and he's done some substituting of the past couple of years, long-term and short-term subs. He currently works at Western, Clinton Prairie, Twin Lakes. He lives in Newcastle, so he does some over there too. Shares his time with Newcastle and Cicero, so he is very excited to start with us as well. He'll give us another well-rounded sub. Jeff Brubaker, he's going to join us in the food service in the cafeteria at the high school. He's getting ready to retire from Chrysler after, I think, twenty-eight years. And he's going to help with the housekeeping, housekeeping of the cafeteria, taking out trash, mopping floors, stuff like that. So good to have him to help Landon Wolf over there, and they'll be a good team together. Naveya McKee, she's hired as an assistant caregiver. We just hired her today. Wanted to get her in tonight so she can start as soon as possible. That'll give Bree the ability to start that second school-age classroom that she's been talking about. So all of her positions are currently filled, so she's at full staff, which is great, that she can pull some kids in there that were either waiting because of ratios or were waiting for the second school-age classroom to open. And then also John Helvey, he's going to be learning to be a substitute bus driver for us, so. He's currently riding with one of the bus drivers to get the lay of the land, so. Resignations, we had three at the E L A. Shante McDaniel, she was only here for a very short amount of time. J C Mitchell was here for a week, and Ava Bowman was, was here for about a year. On, I mean, open enrollment's open right now. We did do some changes with our plan. No increase in price, which is phenomenal. Dental did go up three percent, but no increase in health or vision, so that was great. We did add two tiers that are choices for our employees to make. In the past, we've only had the employee choice or the family choice. So now we're going to have the employee plus spouse or the employee plus children in addition to those, so that cost savings to us, cost savings to the employee if they fall into those categories. So that's a good option for them to have. We do have an apparel store now. That's been a big thing to get. We opened that in the middle of October, and they've already got several orders, so that's great for our employees to be able to do that shopping, and it's local. It's gold medal awards in Bunker Hill. So that's another good thing there. And I did add some things that I've had on here before, but added, added again so that we can see. I added the substitute list, and when you go to that link, it'll actually show who all the subs are, when was the last time they worked. Some that haven't worked lately are doing other things. They're maybe working for us in a full-time capacity. I know a couple of them are in school, so they're doing that, but anytime somebody doesn't work over a year, we take them out, make them inactive so that they're not getting phone calls, and we're not wasting our time calling them either. So that's in there for you to look at. And then I added some other reports that we can pull from Frontline now that are like fill rates by school for teachers. And those are kind of subjective because there are certain classes we never fill, and those are going to show as vacant and not add into the fill rate. So like, our specials at the elementary, they very rarely ever fill those. They just either go to the gym, or they might all go to art, or they might go to music. It'll just depend on who's missing that day and how they have those kids moved around. At the high school, a lot of times, band doesn't get filled because Mr. Humburger or Mr. Henshaw will cover the other one's class. Sometimes agriculture doesn't get filled either. Mr. Plank and Mr. Appleton will cover each other too. So those numbers are a little subjective based on those things, but it's a good, good thing to look at. That's for the first three months of the year. And I'll try to do that every three months so that we can kind of keep track of how we are with fill rate, and we're adding more subs, so that's going to help too. I've got two more in the pipeline that I just couldn't get recommendations back today from previous employers on them, so they'll go into next month's board meeting. And then I also put in there an absence analysis report. It shows, and it's, that's for teachers as well, because they're the ones that have the subs called for them. It shows you the breakdown of days of the week. If there's a certain pattern with days of the week, there's not. It doesn't matter what day it is, it's all about the same, but it shows you breakdowns by sick, P T, or not P T O, but sick, personal, professional development, things like that. So right now, I figured it out. Our average teacher has missed less than three days this year. It's two-point-eight days. So that's pretty good, really, I think. You know, we're allowed to miss fourteen days, contractual days, and we're almost halfway through the year, get close to being halfway through the year, and they're still under three. That's pretty good, so. Just one good thing, and when I was talking with Dr. Shortridge yesterday, I, I said, you don't have to answer me, but I just want to be curious. How do we stack up against the other corporations you sub at? And he goes, you guys are well above what you pay. Western's eighty-five. Prairie's eighty-five. I mean, he's got a doctorate, making eighty-five bucks a day. So he was extremely happy to learn that we pay one oh five for a degree, so. He goes, you guys are. That's a good feedback to hear that we're above the curve, so that's all I have.
So I got a real quick question. I just pulled up the absence report, and so just, so I'm clear, when it says fill not needed, those are a classified position or a something else?
Yeah, yeah, fill not needed, yep. There's not needed to fill that position.
That is not mean, I think you were saying, like.
Those would not be included in there, because they always, a teacher will always require us in the system. Now, they might not fill that position because they have somebody else cover for it, like ag, supplementing ag, or band supplementing band, or specials supplementing specials. That's not like an I A covering the classroom, or another teacher covering a classroom for a rest period or anything like that, so.
No, are they not getting?
That's not, that's not tracked in the system. That's done by the administrators. They push somebody into that position, but that doesn't show into Frontline where I can pull a report.
Well, it doesn't have normal positions filled. Zero openings, is that correct how I read it?
Even E L A, those three got replaced.
She said that filled all of her positions. But she cautioned me that with the amount of toddlers, excuse me, she might need to hire another one, just because twenty toddlers in a classroom with four people, she doesn't know how it's going to work, so.
Is there new room open, or is it opening soon?
Opening Monday.
Okay.
Supposed to be open to seventeen.
Have someone hired for that?
That's what this last one today was, I believe, is, is to supplement that.
I had a question, not because I'm questioning the amount, I'm just trying to, we have that in the back of the classified manual, the rate listing for determinations, this is the guide, on the Noel Bell. So did we, is there, like, I know we haven't had a, but like, how do we determine the twenty? How many, it didn't say in her brick letter how many years of experience she had, or bachelors, masters, whatever she has, but how, so how did we come up with the twenty?
She's kind of, I don't know how we would describe it. We talked about it, and just the skill that she's going to have to have to do that position, we felt it would be a premium job to have. So we kind of based her on, similar to, we have two people teaching in the classroom that aren't licensed. They're getting twenty-five dollars an hour. Technically, they aren't teachers, but that's a premium position. We felt that this was the same exact kind of scenario that we needed to get somebody really qualified, somebody that can do the job, and we would have to pay to do that.
And, and I get that. Where she's saving, saving us money.
Yes, she is.
I get that. I don't have a problem with the twenty. I was just trying to figure out, are we paying, like, for going forward if we had to replace her? Did we, does she have a bachelor's? Does she have that? So like, so the premium is also that, we usually pay them more E L an amount. So I didn't know if we needed to look at how, how many years of experience she has going forward, so we can establish a baseline to put in that classified manual. I, I think twenty dollars is a bargain compared to what it would cost us to.
We actually had another candidate that was offered the job. We actually had another candidate that was offered the job that was even more qualified and turned down a higher price, so.
Yeah, I I I have no problem with the twenty. I I, we just don't have a baseline for it.
Yep.
So I was just trying to figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, I think this would be a good thing to establish as our baseline for this position since it's not been, so.
That was my only comment. I have no problem with it.
I got one question. You mentioned something. I just want clarification. You said there, we have two positions that are being paid twenty-five dollars. They're teaching, but not licensed.
Yeah.
Explain that a little bit.
Well, they're both in special education. It's Cambry Harrison and Michaela Merrill. And um they are in charge of the classroom. They're not the teacher of record because they can't be, but they are in the classroom teaching the students.
And we can get away with that.
Cambry's been there for several years. Uh Michaela is her second year. Uh Cambry's virtually licensed. She has one test to pass. So she's virtually licensed and Michaela's working on hers as well. Matt Smith is monitoring all of that.
Is that something that we can only do in Spuckhead?
I need positions are typically the ones that they'll give some allowances on, so, and hard to fill positions. And that's, those two positions would definitely be categorized as both, actually, so. You know, one of these days, maybe they'll solve the teacher shortage and we won't have to worry about it. I saw a lot of eye rolls, so.
That could go on perpetually. I mean, I mean, we can have somebody in.
Until the state kinda closes the loophole on, uh they've been pretty easy to work with on uh any type of emergency license for a while now, because obviously this is an issue in about every small rural school, but that doesn't mean they couldn't change it.
Right.
Cuz I think we were talking speech therapist earlier. That's one that they did change. You could do an emergency license for a speech therapist for years and then they move that to the medical licensing, and so now you can't. You have to go through the medical license to be able to do that, so. So, yeah, things can always change on that.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Anybody else have any questions? Yeah, thank you. All right. Move to this fairer tonight, so. Move to old business where we're going to approve the qualification of the teacher's agreement, teacher's contract. Before we do that, I see what representative. Does anybody have any comments or anything?
I figured it was wait until the end, but um I think we were in a unique position. Check a bunch of boxes the state had. We were able to reward returning teachers, veteran teachers. We were able to get the new hires up to where the state wants them, and uh I know not a lot of corporations were able to do that. And I think it was a pretty straightforward process for us, luckily. And uh it was just a matter of jumping through the state's loopholes is why we're sitting here in November instead of, you know, a a month ago or so. So the association thanks the administration and the board.
Yeah, I'd say we're pretty blessed to to be able to do all those things, cuz you're right, there's schools near that we're not able to do that, so. That's uh, that's a good thing. And we were recognized by the state that we were able to do that, so.
Were they, we officially met. And that year was unofficial, man.
All right, well, I will entertain a motion to approve the teacher's contract.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. And one abstention, so that passes.
And if I could, can you guys make sure that you um we get your signature on that master agreement so that I can get that into gateway tomorrow? The fifteenth's the last day, so.
Getting close, right?
Yeah, it's getting close. I'd like to get that in there.
So we'll move on to our consent agenda and I don't know that we actually saw appropriation ordinance twenty twenty-five dash four. It's not in our board packet.
It was in last month's because that was the one that
It it actually wasn't. It had one, two, three and five.
It was at our last meeting, in the October thirtieth meeting. There was um the additional appropriation that we had to consider and then I had to advertise.
Okay, okay.
Remember that.
You're right. Yep, Chris, yes. Okay, so we're good to move on with the consent agenda.
Why is it highlighted? Anybody ever answer that?
Why is that?
No, you're the one.
We'll maybe pull it out, that's fair. Yeah, I don't know why. I have no idea.
All right, so there's so there isn't any need to pull it out. Anything out. Unless anybody has any questions about it. All right, well, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Move this second in, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right. All right, that brings us down to donations. So we've got enough donation of six thousand dollars and it specified thousand to each building's emergency fund, and I I believe in the past that's gone to like the nurses, so they kinda divvy that up.
Is that what a medical scholarship is, goes to the nurses, or is there something different for a medical scholarship?
I think that's towards a student, if I understand. Yeah, the emergency fund, I think that's gone to the nurses.
It's usually as the emergency fund goes to the nurses and they kinda divvy that up based on need and things like that. And then the education scholarships, who's gonna, who's gonna oversee that? Who's gonna be choosing that? What do we have, any kind of criteria or anything?
There weren't any, there wasn't anything that I've seen from special criteria on this uh that's come through, so typically it's done at the high school level. Um and I know that they've got a committee that they use for their other scholarships as well, so. Unless there's some, something that comes forward to say, here's the specifics of what we want, that's how, we'll divvy those out, so. And we're still working. There's, there's uh at least one outstanding per that had come in and they're still working through the process, so we'll have some, uh we'll have probably another one as well, but we'll have to kinda lump in and try to figure out what we do as far as selection goes, so.
We have a motion to accept the donations as you have spelled out. Second? We're gonna pay the three to five by saying aye. We'll accept those. Five oh, thank you very much, yes. All right, now we've come to the fourth of the year.
Do you want some fries before we get to the board reports?
Yeah, so um one of the things that we've been working on um as a board is looking at some access for filling board seats. And one of the things that we're looking at is actually trying to make it easier to, we've had a holdover situation we have had on uh which meant that there was a seat that was on a building. We actually had to retain Mr. Lee. And um uh we wanna try to alleviate that and open up access, so. What we're contemplating and we're working through within Indiana election division and things like that, we just wanted to get this out there. Um is that we would like to combine uh certain townships, precincts, so to speak, so there are three of them. I served in Washington Township, which is District Five. Becky's in District One, Miami. Rick is holdover for Tipton, which is two, I believe. Combining those seats, so those are three seats, and we're looking at maintaining um, you know, the residence thing for one seat in that area, so you would have to live in one of those three precincts. The other two would be at large, which means anybody in our district could run for those seats. Um and then we would do the same thing for the doctor. Christie, which is Jackson, we did three catchships as well, so there's two seats there. One would be tied to residency in the either of those two. It would be one district and the other one would be at large as well, since, and we believe that since everybody in our district votes on everyone, that we can do that, and the reason being is to open up access so that, you know, the people that are interested, we don't, you know, and Christie's one of the previous elections, there were
Four other people.
Four other people that wanted a seat. Well, it was only one available. Ryan's ran out of post. I ran opposed by Rick, who moved out of the district and
You ran out of post, didn't you?
Yeah, and Becky ran out of post, so, you know.
So my four could fill in on the offside goals, we could fill in whatever.
And and those would retain to be uh the, you know, presidential election year, off year.
In my previous, too, I was, the first time, I think there was three candidates and then a second, or maybe one was four and one was three. This time, nobody ran, so we're just trying to get people involved. And if all, you know, all three of them come from Miami township, that's fine. That's the North District and you at least, you know, one has to be. Just like with Deer Creek, you know, Young America, you know, and and I'd love to see how many registered voters there are in the couple of those. I mean, it would probably shock us. There's just not many.
I mean, and the idea of keeping a couple of seats tied to residency is so that you don't have a Young America mafia taking over, you know, something like that.
Does that make sense, what we're trying to do? All all we're trying to do is just allow more people to get in there, so if they're free from Galveston and none from Deer Creek, that's fine. It still hits the Southern District of the county, which is two of them, and everybody can vote, so it's not like it's an electoral deal. We're just trying to get more people involved and that's, that's what we're after.
And you just addressed the one thing I thought of, which was, you know, pros, more access, cons, if you get a group that has an agenda, that would be a concern.
That's why we're still keeping that line, is they all can't come from New Waverly. You can't have five people from New Waverly on the board. Or with the same words.
Fraud in a school board election.
Well, I think that, you know, we just want support from constituents, you know, hey, this is a great idea.
Pull anything.
Yeah, yeah, you know, we're not trying to draw a line to anything.
Can you think of any concerns or anything that we've overlooked with this discussion? We're not taking a vote on anything. We're just, we're just opening up.
I just said, I think you guys have already gone over it yourselves, so. Other than those two items.
I think by splitting it out and having, you know, just like we were talking about, like two at-large seats, that that does sort of limit. There there's a limitation as to how many are gonna come from a particular region, so it's not like, you know, like one area is gonna load the board.
And we're gonna keep the same election year where these two are, you know, the next one and then us three would be three years from now.
Still staggered.
Yeah, still staggered.
There's a lot of hoops to jump through, but we at least wanted to start the discussion to say, anybody looking at it online or anybody here to meeting, throw us any feedback. If you think of a question in a week, send it to us, so we, cuz there's things maybe we haven't thought of. But all we're trying to do is open up more access and get more people involved without the limitation of we don't want three people from Galveston be interested and none from Young America or Deer Creek and then have to go force somebody from Deer Creek Township to do it when we had multiple people from Galveston that were willing to do it. It's all we're trying to achieve.
I think we've all, I mean, I I know when I ran against him and then found out that, hey, I was gonna stay, cuz I couldn't, I couldn't anybody run. I mean, I talked to, you know, people that even ran against me, nah, I don't wanna do it now, so I'm like, you know, then what do you do?
And I mean, I think, again, not speaking for everyone around me here, but I I would absolutely just sort of view this from afar, uh just because obviously anyone in the community could wind up being my boss, uh you know, the way this all works, so I I think you voiced the one concern. I I kinda thought our group was the the agenda thing, but we're at, you know, like Matt said, you're trying to alleviate that as well, so I think you've taken that into consideration.
Well, we just want, again, put that out there, just sort of circulate.
We're still work, we're still working on it, but we're still looking for
Yes, we are still working on it. Mr. Dan is working on it with uh other legal counsel that makes sure that we
It's like to challenge you, right?
And it is a challenge because there's so many different hoops and and dated hoops that predate many of us in our lives, so, yeah. It's, it's crazy.
Well, he danced around that one. I actually did that.
Yeah. Okay.
We didn't point any fingers.
We'll move on to board comments, or Mr. Dan, you got anything you wanna add to that or?
Uh just the um the complexity of the law. Uh Bradley King, co- co-chairman of the Indiana Election Division, called Title Twenty of the Indiana Code, which governs education, a Byzantine maze. Another attorney who specializes in education law called it a garbage can, Title Twenty. It's, it's it's a hodgepodge of laws the general assemblies put together through the years and it's it sometimes contradicts itself and it just makes things, and these governing, uh what we're talking about is modification of our governing body plan, and that's caught right in the middle of the discrepancies in Title Twenty, as we're finding out from different government agencies. We will have to get approval ultimately by the Indiana State Board of Education, but we're finding we have to, on a more practical le- level, deal with the Indiana Election Division, uh because concerns, you know, we want our clerk to be happy, our Cass County clerk who is in charge of local elections, so. A lot of moving pieces, folks, and with the law, with the very diverse and complicated Title Twenty with different pieces, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, we'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Lee, again.
Well, I was just thinking while you were talking, John, so when they said we had to declare, we don't have to, but if you declare Republican Democrat, does that mean if I don't, you know, I don't plan on running, I don't run and nobody's in, is it still gonna be the board's decision to try to find somebody or are they gonna step in, say, well, wait a minute, you know? It depends if if the candidate's declared or not.
Yeah, if, 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 if you declared as Democrat and you vacated your seat, um it may fall to the
Party.
Party.
But if you've run, if you're a board member and do not declare, then it's the old, the board replaces. So you know that first person declares, then it'll start be, oh, I better declare type thing. I've just You do not have to declare. I know you don't, but you know what I'm saying.
You can declare independent, too.
Yeah, I was just curious, cuz I I went through that with my town, with the the, you know, it was, then it become a a time thrash of, if you don't appoint by a certain time or town attorney says at this date, the town board will, cuz by law they could, so. I know there's still, it's still really vague out there, so there's just so many things. Yeah, under the, under the old law, and it's still in effect for board members who aren't a declared party member. If if you, like some of the examples when um Mrs. Miller resigned, you had so much time to replace her or else the circuit court judge does. Yes. Thirty days or else? Yeah, I think it's thirty days. And Ms. Ms. Miller, Mrs. Miller was awesome. She uh gave us a resignation date out there to give time to canvass the public and try to. Well, I I just think that hopefully, you know, if people are watching some, they kinda say, hey, you know, that's, this is I think it seems like a good thing to do moving forward for future school boards to make sure it doesn't uh fall into disarray, we'll say. You get a lot more people.
That's what we're trying to do.
So that's all I really had, just uh my two cents on that.
This is all.
Thanks to Chris for that nice snow day, Old School, on Monday. My kids enjoyed it.
Congrats to a lot of us, too. So we had a good football season. Afternoon rocked it down at the cross country, band did a great job. I'm missing somebody. Who am I missing? Had a good, good ball season. Keeping our students healthy, so count a lot of blessings. A lot of good stuff. A lot of people focus on the negative, but we got a lot of good stuff happening, so. That's much of the staff and the team.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing. Congratulations to all the
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing, congratulations to all the fall activities wrapping up, I think those casters represented well. And I'm very grateful that financially we were able to do what we did in the contract. It was my first time witnessing it, so the very intro thing to sit in the room and see all that come down, but. Uh I was very grateful that we could pull that up and, and also hopefully do something for the classified. In the near future, so.
I agree with that. Thank you all for what you're doing and all that you're doing, everybody, and uh, that's a good work. All I got, so I will entertain a motion to. All those in favor?
Aye.
They can't hear.
Yeah. Halfway up here, I think, I think that, all my pockets I have, I think that, so.